Mind leading this in the place of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Myers. Welcome, everybody. First up on the agenda is the consent agenda.
I move to approve consent agenda.
We've been seconded to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. So now we gotta wait five minutes for a public hearing. I love starting on time, because the next up is a public hearing that starts at ten fifteen.
And the three sixty minutes just for clarification was the ones that dos the corrections, correct? Okay.
On it, on it.
Sorry.
On them on me.
Better start signing now, you'll be done at four o'clock.
Go ahead and move up here, we're pretty close. You expecting a lot of public input?
I don't believe so. I haven't had any comments. Which do you want?
I have to start the public hearing on the, I think I find a director, planning director, Joey Hill with Public Hearing Company, LLC floodplain permit.
Morning. So, we've received.
Well, there is major representation on time. I know, sir. We're trying to start without you.
So we have a flood, floodplain development permit application from Mejo LLC. This is for a property addressed at forty-two ninety-two South Fork Road. It's for work along the South Fork of the Shoshone River in a GR forty zoning district. Public notice was placed in the paper, the Cody Enterprise, March sixteenth and March thirtieth notifying the public that this hearing was going to occur. Mejo's application included a certificate of no rise and was given to my office on March first of twenty twenty-one. And since that time, we've received a number of other materials on request or just that had come in as part of that project. Mejo has experienced some riverbank erosion and dike deterioration as a result of regular movement of the South Fork of the Shoshone River and natural degradation. The project includes placing riprap approximately one point five feet to five feet in diameter along an approximately seven hundred foot stretch of the West Riverbank. The intent is to reclaim and restore all work areas to pre-project condition, including haul and access routes, stockpile areas, and the bank itself. Reconstruction of the top of the dike after the project will match pre-project top of bank elevation. And according to the certificate of no rise, which was stamped by Eric Wachov, the professional engineer working on this project, the proposed improvements will result in no rise of the base flood elevation. Little history on this particular project, car bodies and concrete debris were placed along the riverbank as a form of protection in the past. I'm not sure when exactly that occurred. Floodplain Development Permit four dash twelve was issued in March of two thousand twelve by Resolution two thousand twelve sixteen, allowing fifteen hundred cubic feet of rock fill, three J hook rock veins, and two root rods to be placed to protect the bank at that time. Unfortunately, part of those repairs have failed and we're trying to get a little more serious about shoring of that thing. Regulations that apply are the two thousand fifteen Park County Development Standards and Regulations, Chapter Four, Section Five A, the floodplain overlay district, which requires this type of work to be permitted by the county court of commissioners. The project site is again at forty-two ninety-two South Fork Road. It's about forty-five miles southwest of Cody, on the west bank of the South Fork of the Shoshone River. There's a figure showing that location in the staff report. This river in this area is highly braided, and the alluvial nature of the river results in large cobble bed material moving regularly with minimal vegetation growing. The nearest existing accessory structures, at least as we can tell in aerial photography, are about four hundred feet away to the north east. So here's one and two show the location of the project and types of uses of the properties nearby. Public notice was sent, as mentioned, for this hearing on the sixteenth and thirtieth of March. Neighbor notices were sent on March twelfth to all landowners within six hundred and sixty feet of the property boundary. We also sent agency notices by email on March eleventh to the county engineer, county treasurer, wean pest, fire district, fire inspector, Wyoming game and fish, army corps of engineers, the local conservation district, and trout unlimited. We had a couple of comments or responses back from some of the agencies. In a letter dated March first, the Corps of Engineers indicated that the proposed activities are authorized. We provided a copy of that. In an email dated March eleventh, the county treasurer indicated the tax to pay in full on this property. In an email from March twelfth, Jerry Parker of Park County Fire District Two indicated he has no issues with the proposed project. And then on March twenty-second, I received a phone call from Carrie Carey of the U.S. Forest Service, asking for a copy of this application and all the materials. Her concern was that the project was actually on the U.S. Forest Service lands, which are adjacent to this, this property. I had discussed with the project engineer this concern, and he had sent me a letter that they just forgot to include in the application, where a surveyor had confirmed that the plant activities are in fact on the major property, and that the letter is attached to this application as well. The county engineer reviewed this application and supporting documentation. He provided comments on April first, and basically stated that he has no substantial concerns with this planned project. So all of those agency responses were included in this packet. We haven't received any public comments on this project as, as of yet. As you are aware, there are standards and evaluation to approve or deny a floodplain permit. And so I'll run through those ten factors right now. The number one is the danger to life and property due to flooding or erosion damage. The purpose of this project is to restore and stabilize the damaged streaming, thus discouraging lateral migration and reducing sediment transport. No danger to life or property is expected to result from this project. The work completed should not change the function of the channel. Number two, susceptibility of the proposed facility and its contents to flood damage and the effect of such damage on the owner. The proposed project provides flood protection for a one-hundred-year event and will protect the existing stream banks from further erosion. Performing repairs along the section of the river will help to protect that real property from flood damage and the effects of such damage on the owner. Number three, the danger that materials may be swept onto other lands. The project design and material installation should prevent further damages and reduce the danger of dislodging of materials. Number four, the compatibility of the proposed use with existing and anticipated development. The materials used to repair the stream bank are compatible with the existing and anticipated development. Number five, safety of access to the property in times of flood or ordinary, or ordinary and emergency vehicles. This proposed project will not hinder the safety or access to the property in times of flood or ordinary and emergency vehicles. Access to the property is from South Fork Road, and that will not be impacted by the project work. Number six, costs of providing governmental services during and after floods conditions, including maintenance and repair of streets, bridges, and public utilities and facilities. The proposed project will not impact public streets, bridges, or utilities and facilities. It will not have an impact on the costs of providing governmental services during or after flood conditions to such infrastructure. Number seven, expected heights, velocity, duration, rate of rise, and sedimentation of the floodwaters. According to a certificate of no rise stamped by Eric Wachov, professional engineer, on March first, the proposed improvements will result in no rise of the base flood elevation. The cross-sectional flow area of the river will not be substantially changed, and therefore, no change in the expected heights, velocity, duration, rate of rise, and sedimentation of floodwaters should occur. Number eight, necessity for a waterfront location. Obviously, this is a stream bank repair restoration project, so conducting work in the waterfront location is necessary. Number nine, availability of alternative locations not subject to flooding or erosion damage. Again, stream bank repair restoration project, so you have to conduct this work there. There's no alternative location. And number ten, the relationship of the proposed use to the land use plan. The nineteen ninety-eight land use plan specifies that we will regulate building and floodplains to maintain a balance between human needs and protection of the environment and enforce existing laws on river channeling and river work. This expectation is being met with this permit, so your review will be addressing that concern. Staff recommends approval of this particular application with the following conditions. Number one, the floodplain development permit applies only to the repair and stabilization of approximately seven hundred feet of the left bank of the South Fork of the Shoshone River along the property addressed as forty-two ninety-two South Fork Road, Cody, Wyoming. Number two, this floodplain development permit is valid for one year from the date of approval. Number three, county personnel may conduct site visits during or following the completion of construction. Number four, the applicant shall notify the floodplain administrator, myself, when project work is complete and provide photographs of as-built conditions. Number five, any changes to the proposed project or proposed structures or development in the floodplain that are not expressly covered by this permit shall require a separate floodplain development permit. And number six, the applicant shall otherwise comply with Park County Wyoming Development Standards and Regulations. There are some photographs of the project area as it is currently. You can see the car bodies that had been in place for quite some time. You can see the size of the materials that are on site. Obviously, the riprap that is going to be placed will be significantly larger than that material. Any questions? Here to answer.
Quick, quick question, just curious. I don't care one way or the other, but I got anticipate taking our bodies out and leaving them. There's been a movement on South Fork, trying to get rid of all these car bodies.
I'm not aware that they plan to remove the car bodies. I believe they plan to leave them in place, but you can ask.
I don't particularly care one way or the other. They're good. They're really good jobs.
Well, definitely we plan to leave them in place.
Pardon?
We plan to leave them in place.
In, in place and just cover them over with different stuff, okay.
Yeah, I would say probably removing the car bodies would cause more disruption to the, the riverine environment than just leaving them in place.
Yeah, and Hillary tonight even brought it up because there is a strong movement on South Fork. It has been for years, trying to get rid of all the old car bodies.
Board, do you have any more questions for staff? Okay, this is a public hearing. Any public comment?
I'm moving to public hearing.
Moving second, opposed to public hearing. Good discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Public carriage. What's your favorite?
Go ahead, Lloyd.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I, I have no problem with any of it, however, I, I would like to redo condition two, which is the one-year calendar to have running conjunction with the Y M D, you and Army Corps of Engineers deadline, because if theirs expires, ours should. And ours should run in conjunction with them, I believe. And there is, it's the last paragraph on page twenty-one that says that basically they can suspend, modify, revoke. If there's any changes to condition five, comes back to us. But if it extends, or for some reason they get weather wrong or something, they can't finish it, and it goes beyond that one year, they'd have to come back through the process where the art, if we follow their timeline, then it's, then this is a one-time done deal.
Joy, you got any comments on that?
I'm just looking at what that actual date is. I gotta find the.
Last, it says, the last paragraph, this verification will be valid until the N W Ps expires March eighteenth unless N W P three or M W P thirteen is modified, suspended, or revoked prior to that date. And basically, it could be possibly extended or revoked shorter. If they lose their permit through the D E Q or Army Corps of Engineers, then they lose ours.
So, Mr. Chairman, would you like that condition to reword? This floodplain development permit is valid through March eighteenth, twenty twenty-two?
Or somehow in conjunction with theirs, because if they have the ability to extend it to the D E Q, ours should extend as well, so they don't have to come through our process. I don't know how to word that. I, I'm open for suggestions, but.
I understand where you're coming from, Lloyd, because this, this says this verification will be valid until the N W Ps expire March eighteen, twenty twenty-two, unless it is modified, suspended, or revoked prior to that date. So if it was modified, suspended, then it would, it would, ours would should just follow their.
But realistically, we're actually giving them less time. I mean, if we're a year from today.
But it could be modified to be extended too.
Right. So instead of putting a, see, I'm just matching what our ranks say.
I know, I know.
If you want it to say something more generic, is valid so long as it is valid with the Corps of Engineers?
Yep.
I mean, is that because right now that gives them less time?
Under this, it does. But if they're, but our permit isn't going to be any good if theirs is.
Right. And they can also request an extension from us as well.
Yeah, they will have to go through the whole process.
Yeah, like they could come to me and ask for an extension, and I can grant that without coming to you, because I have done that before.
Okay, I, I mean, I'm just trying to make it more in conjunction in the same timeline with the state and the Feds.
Yeah, we did this previously. I'm, I'm open to whatever, whatever you want.
How to make your motion with the amendment that if, if you wanted to.
Excuse me, Lloyd, I mean, I totally understand where you're coming from, but I don't think we necessarily need it, because we've done it in the past. We did it with the game and fit, right?
We did it with Ira.
Yeah, Ira, Ira Feller.
Yeah, we did it with him.
And we did it with the game and fish, yeah, but it, but it had to come back through and go through us again.
Only after, only after they'd let it expire completely. Completely, that was their choice to, to let it expire and come back with the one.
But the way, the way this is written right now, Joy has the authority. If something happens, they don't get the project done, they go get the other permit extension. And all they have to do, they can pick up the phone and call you or come in and see and say, hey, you know, we're behind, but we didn't get the extension, and you can say, yeah, all right.
Yeah.
That's, I'm, I'm good if the applicant is, I just trying to simplify, whereas, this is a done deal, never has to come back.
I'm seeing them shaking their heads. Okay. All right, moving right along.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the floodplain permit. Number, excuse me. Two dash twenty-one, Mejo.
Okay.
LLC Bank Stabilization Project.
Are we changing that condition? I'm sorry. We're just leaving it now?
Is there a second?
Second.
Moving seconded to approve the floodplain permit from Mejo LLC. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, most carries. Okay.
Twenty twenty-one sixteen. Thank you.
Thank you, Joy.
Yeah, Joy, is there's any way to think on someone about wording that when they do that, you know, because our permit, our permit really doesn't do any good if theirs expires somewhere along the line. I don't know. That's all I'll say. That's all I have to say.
All right, next up, we have Meyer and Haney with Powell Valley Recycling coming in front of us to talk about their budget.
Yes, the person who wanted to talk.
No, the person I wanted to see just walked in wanting some money, so. I didn't want to see her, actually.
Thank you, Dad.
Does it work on the talk?
It's been recorded.
First of all, Mr. Chairman, I want to thank you for giving us and the rest of the commissioners for giving us an opportunity to plead our case, which is always, as you know, and we've been here before, and every year we are always a little short of money. And twenty twenty was a tough year for us all the way around. And luckily, we were able to get some funds through the government on the relief program for wages and stuff that kept us alive, because we were some months that we didn't have any business at all because of the Corona thing. And then in December of last year, we had our entire staff come down with the Corona nineteen thing, so we lost some time right there. Basically, you've seen our report. I'm not sure exactly what Mary Nell got, but I'm sure it pretty much coincides. One of the innovative things we did this last year was start tracking who is bringing recyclables to us. That was one of the questions the city of Powell wanted to know, and it's also what the commissioners were interested in, what percentages. And as you noticed, that, that, we got a tier fifty-five percent of the people that are our patrons are residents within the city of Powell, but forty-two percent are patrons outside the city, but still within Park County, and the other three percent are from other counties. So I guess basically what we're asking for, and I, I have opportunity for questions here to us. As you can tell, in our recyclables, we have to hold till we can get a market for them. Cardboard market with the China thing is, is disappeared. But we, our last reports that we got this last month from Inner West Paper out of Salt Lake City indicates that maybe the cardboard market's starting to come around. The United States has built some plants of their own now, to where we can make our own cardboard boxes and stuff, and, and to start to help our domestic supply and not rely on China, which is shipping empty boxes over here that they make over there. So that market looked to improve. One of the things that is hurting us a little right now is steel prices are up. Bailing wire, the kind of bailing wire we have to use to hold those bales has really gotten expensive. So I guess basically what I'm asking for is a return to the eight thousand dollar limit to help us cover the expenses of the wire that includes what we're bailing for the county, because that forty-two percent of that is county products. So it's that extra products, you know, the city people have to pay that amount. We do have a couple of patrons in the county that occasionally bring a hundred dollar check in, but that's pretty far and few between. And so we're struggling a little bit, but we've got some cardboard held up. Hopefully, in another month, we can ship. Shipping prices are going out of the, everything is a surcharge. They take it, if you can get a truck right now. We have to get in line to get shipping, and it is surcharged on it, so everything is just really hurting us right now. So, and we'd like to get back to, you know, an eight thousand dollar contribution from the county, if that's possible, to help cover some of those added expenses, because of the number of people that are in the county that are not paying anything to help us a little bit. So we don't refuse anybody. Don't misunderstand me. We don't say, oh, you're from the county, you know, you're gonna have to pay us something, because I'm sure they walk away. A lot of them would. There are some of them that might, but we did have a flyer that we gave out, you know, saying if you'd like to contribute, you could do that. And it wasn't overwhelmingly successful. So that's kind of where we're at, you know. I, I, I know that budgeting process, I read the papers like everybody else. I know the budgeting process is tough, and it's got a little tougher for the city, but I'm on the Recreation District Board too. And, and we're having some cutting back on some things that we've done in the past too, and what the city gives us there too. So I guess we're just making an appeal with that in mind to help us, at least in that one area, to cover some of the expenses that occur because of the extra stuff that comes from the county that we don't get any revenue for. And we certainly can't go to the citizens of Powell and say, oh, give us another dollar, because they've heard some complaints too. We're trying to adjust our hours, you know, to appease to everybody. It's impossible. We tried the containers, and for those of you who don't understand, the containers outside the building, if the people would cooperate, it'd be a wonderful thing. But they throw their garbage in there and everything, and sometimes it's just a terrible mess. So we, we've been pretty successful for this. We're open Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays, and every other, and the first and third Saturdays of the month. We've discussed adding Saturdays, but we were down to five employees, because one of them was out sick, and another one decided to be a horseman here last week and fell off his horse and broke seven ribs. So we're down to four. So we really can't expand what we do, because we just don't have the employees to do it. So we are holding our cardboard. We did get a little good news this week. We can take number two for the paper, number two, plastic, colored plastics with a screw-on lid. There's now a market that's opened up for that, and that's because the price of oil is up. The minute the price of oil goes down, well, then everybody, the plastic people can make the raw product cheaper. But we'll take it as long as we can, and anything else that comes up, we'd be happy to, to recycle if we can get rid of the product. That's the whole thing. We lost one of the manifera of one of the receiving stations in Billings, that one closed down, but now another one is picked up there. So we're able to ship some of our plastics and stuff like that to Billings, again, which really cuts our freight costs, because we can, we have some trailers, and we just have to have somebody local who gone to it and take it to Billings. So that's kind of where we're at. If you got any questions, why, be happy to answer.
First, the flyer you sent out, that was on recyclable paper, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's one of the flyers we sent out, yeah.
The, as far as getting regular hours, pre-COVID times, you guys had regular hours. I know you've really had some problems with staffing. Some didn't even want to show up to work during that time. Are you looking down the road to maybe getting regular hours instead of just Tuesday, Thursday? Sometimes you're open, sometimes you're not, because I know for people who like to recycle, when they show up there, they, they notice you guys are closed, and they'll just throw in the nearest dumpster.
Well, yeah, the problem is, we finally settled on some solid hours. And I hate to keep changing hours, and then everything market goes the heck again, and we have to cut back on the, on the amount of salary.
But is that the long-term goal to get regular hours?
Recycling comes to back for, and I can't say for profit, because we're a nonprofit organization, Lloyd. Let you know that, you know, if we have money, we have to set it aside. Now, we do have that large amount of money in savings, but we have a baler that is about forty-five years old, and we can't get parts for it, and Superior Machine has been fortunate enough to manufacture and, and some parts when we need it to keep it going. But if that goes down, that's a fifty thousand dollar expense, and we can't borrow. We really don't feel we can borrow money in recycling right now. The bank would kind of look at you like, you know, what's your collateral? Well, zero, but.
Has the city noticed an increase in tonnage since you guys have been closed?
We are picking at tonnage back up again. We're getting back into more cardboard and stuff like that again.
But as far as Daryl's group with the sanitation department, has he noticed an increase in tonnage?
Well, Daryl's is about the same. The businesses now are back, those that were shut down, of course, weren't doing much. But now that they're back in, everybody's back in business and cardboard, he picks it up. He doesn't have anything to do with us. You understand that, that I won't go in. That's a history thing that I'd like to see changed to where the city collects it and dumps it off at the, at the recycling center instead of bails it themselves, because that would, I think, would help everybody, but Daryl's retiring May seventh, so. So we'll see when the new guy gets in there a couple of months and maybe bring up another proposal.
Have you, have you thought about putting up a camera out at the collection cages out there to maybe discourage people from just throwing garbage in instead of the cardboard or separating?
You know, we tried everything with the, with the containers outside and the garbage thing. And it just, people just, it's still wobbling. You know, we got signs right there to say that when we're closed, don't put anything on the ground. Yesterday morning, we had a meeting and I picked up two sacks right on the ground, right underneath the sign that says, don't put anything there. So I don't understand people like that, you know. And even think, none of us do. We're all environmental people. You guys are ranchers and outfitters and, and even radio announcers.
Any more questions from Meyer? We appreciate you presenting it to us. You know, the drill is just put it in front of us. We're gonna be obviously making these decisions later on as far as the funding goes. And we're getting, you know, at least I'm getting some pushback from a few folks out there that we need to cut back on the, on the special funding stuff. I and I've asked, at least I did, when the, when the fifth penny failed, I asked people to come forward and figure out what they don't want to fund. And so I've been getting some pushback on, on some of the, the special.
I'm sure you have. Yeah, I'm not arguing that point at all. It's just, we'd like to get us, you know, like to say to help us out in that one respect, since we don't get anything else from the county residents that we allowed it and reservice. We'd like just a little bit bigger share. So I do have one other thing I'd like to just mention. For thirty-some years, I was Executives Secretary Director of the Wyoming Solid Waste Association. And one of the things that we worked on all over the state was landfills. And as a picture I saw in the Powell Tribune last week of the snowflakes outside of the city of Cody here, most, two or three of the most windy places in the state have went to a baler system. And I, I think it would at least something you could discuss over a period of time of putting a baler, baling it, stacking it nice and thin. Casper, Rollins quit it, put a baler in. Now they transport their bales all the way to Casper to be buried. They got out of the landfill business entirely.
That's, that's something that Meyer and I do, something we're gonna be discussing. We, we're having our landfill, kind of our landfill update here shortly on, on where we're at as far as money, tipping rates, et cetera. And, you know, it's, you, I don't know if you were aware, but we did have a discussion with some of the local folks, businesses the other day about, about getting rid of the plastic bags and or minimizing the plastic bag. Because those are a lot of the windblown, windborne litter. But I think a discussion about a baler is.
Well, I understand the problems, you know. We closed a number of landfills in the state over the thirty years that I was there just because of a lot of those problems. And they ended up transporting to other places that had better facilities to handle it.
Is that, Meyer, is that new system that they put up in Billings, that big building? Is that what they do inside it is bail it?
I don't know if Billings is bailing or not. But they're treating it a little different when they unload. You know, they're not unloading in the open. So they get it and then they figure they can handle it better that way. Billings probably doesn't want to bail because you understand that they get a pretty good set of revenue off the methane gas. When they build a layer of garbage, then they build pipes on top of that to collect the methane gas. Then they build another layer of garbage and they put the pipes. MDU has that contract and they power up a bunch of their buildings, city buildings and stuff with the methane they get off.
I just saw in the news a month or so ago, their grand opening of their new, I think you believe it.
But they're handling it a little bit different than they were because they were having the litter blow. I understand the litter, you know, Cody Wind Tunnel there, in that way.
We're definitely open for suggestions.
The original board.
One answer, we don't think.
I was on the original board when the county took over the landfill from the city of Cody. And we talked about it at that time, but it was fairly new then. The baling systems were fairly new. Big Piney went to a baling system, but they made a big mistake. They went with the European roller type bail. And will you get an engine block or something in that roller type thing? And it didn't work and break down most of the time. Jackson bales and they shipped theirs to, they were shipping to Big Piney, but I think they're shipping to Idaho Falls now.
Mr. Chairman, I was just wondering, how much tonnage do you think you divert by recycling cardboard a year?
Oh, we got that. We did five hundred, in two thousand and nineteen, we diverted fit five hundred and sixty-two thousand, eight hundred and ten pounds. And thirty-four thousand pound, three hundred and forty thousand pounds were waiting to be shipped. And we shipped then six hundred and ten thousand, seven hundred pounds in twenty twenty because we found a market for, so we just loaded everything on it and got it out of there and cleaned it out.
Well, wrapping that up, we appreciate you coming down here, Meyer.
Well, thank you for your time and.
Thanks for the advice too.
And so I don't know if you come over to Powell, bring your recyclables. We'd be happy to take them. Thank you.
There's a sheriff out there. All right. Next up, we have Park County Sheriff Scott Stewart to discuss replacing a search and rescue vehicle.
Sure, so I think I kind of outlined it in the letter, but to, I guess for the rest of the people. We have a two thousand and one Ford F three fifty was given to us by Special Ops years ago. Great little vehicle. As I explained in the letter, we've had some breaking issues with pulling big trailers. It's just, it's not, for whatever reason, that thing has some issue with slowing down them bigger rigs. More overly though is the power. We can't really pull a, our big trailer over the mountain very well. We have an opportunity, as I requested, we have twenty-one thousand change left in our vehicle purchase budget. I would request we use twenty thousand of that. I have donors to match the rest of it for a new vehicle. We're not gonna spec out nothing fancy, it'd be just like the last one of Fleet, one ton. We are kicking at the idea of doing gas, we're not sure yet. But then what Roden Bridge has been eyeballing that thing for a while, I'm sorry, Billings Grounds, we had a van they wanted. It's set up perfect for their type of stuff, lockable utility boxes, put all their stuff in it. It's been, been sit, it's been babied in the garage the whole time. It's in great mechanical shape. We just put new tires on it. So again, what I would request is that if we possible to give that to those guys, spec out a new one. Again, just a fleet model, nothing fancy. And then the, the, whatever, over two, over twenty thousand, we have the donors to pay for.
The only question, I'm confused on the van, you're telling someone the van?
Well, we have a tactical van. It's just a big white van, kind of like a delivery truck.
Sheriff's Department or search and rescue?
Search, search, or I'll say Sheriff's Department has it. So Billings Grounds, I've evolved that for a while. I wanted to get that from us.
So you would still trade, what would you do with this pickup, the V ten one?
That's what I would suggest we give to Billings and Grounds for them, a work truck.
Oh, they get it.
Right. If we sell it or trade it, we're not gonna get a lot of money for it. And it's a perfect, good vehicle.
So back to the van, we're talking two different.
That's, yeah, that's not even in the equation. That was just a discussion where they wanted.
Well, I got that email and I was like, where does this van tie into this? That's all right. I, I'm easily confused.
Moving seconded further discussion, are you, you gonna find another truck?
We're gonna order one.
Inventory is.
Yeah, I know that. So, so what we plan on doing is do like we do in everything else, we're gonna spec it out, put it out to bids, we'll put a sealed bids here. That way, there's no question. So we'll spec it out, have a bid date to open. And then we'll see how long it takes. Luckily, we still got that truck, we can use it until whenever.
Okay. All those in favor?
Hi.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Next up is the healthcare agreement.
So, Mr. Chairman, Board, it's the annual agreement, I think, or this is the fourteenth one, something like that. So as in the past, it's about a three percent increase, usually cost of living type stuff. We've negotiated down every now and then, but not so successful this year. Still a very valuable, valuable asset and trying to get somebody else to do it's impossible, so. And I mean, I'd be happy to go into it if anybody has any questions as well.
It's the same, I mean, it's, it's, I remember when you moved to this and it's, it's cheaper than us having our own.
Cheaper in the liability, they have their own attorneys, they represent us. I mean, they're, we turn the medical to them. So when we get a lawsuit or a complaint, we turn it over to them, they handle everything, it's out of our hands.
And as far as the quality of care, what have you found?
Great, great. They, they're stepping up on some things and giving us more nursing hours, more time in, in the, in the facility. But yeah, they've been, they've been wonderful to work with.
Hey, any questions for the sheriff?
This is just a one-year extension.
It is every twelv-, so this is the twelfth amendment, which their amendment is just the cost. So it's a twelfth year in a row now. And I apologize, they were supposed to give us a new sign sheet that has the chairman as Lee and not Joe. But we can X that out, but this for the chairman to sign, so that's all the motion we need to be.
Second.
Moving seconded further discussion, all those in favor?
Hi.
One other question on the Forest Service? Okay, okay, we'll have to come back on that one.
No, Colleen, excuse me, because she made it and then Lee was discussing, so she made it, mine didn't count.
All right, so you'll come back and talk about the Forest Service Agreement. Ten-four.
Thank you to the board.
Thank you, Scott. Next up, Rebecca Burns, Director of Powell Economic Partnership.
Hello, Chairman Lewinston, Commissioners, how are you doing this morning? Good to see you. As you mentioned, I'm the Executive Director for the Powell Economic Partnership, Powell Chamber and Visitor Center. We are one organization with one board, one operating budget and three distinct missions to execute economic development, business assistance and increased tourism for the Powell Valley. So Pep today is asking for a ten thousand dollar fiscal year request for twenty-one, twenty-two. This money goes directly into our operating budget. As you are well aware, it is easy to fund programs or it's easier to fund programs and much, much more difficult to fund operations. And so this money is critical to our organization so that we can execute the programs that we, that we do. Real quick, we'll, we'll just go over return on investment for twenty twenty. You supplied Pep ten thousand dollars in twenty twenty. And if you go to page three, four and five of our annual report of our requests that really kind of highlights the programs that we executed. So of course, membership, agriculture, promote Powell, frontline, outdoor rec, Americor Vista Program advocacy, maker space and the arts is what we really worked on. And I just want to focus on a handful of these projects and, and open it up for questions if you have any. One is local foods. So Pep has had a long tradition of working to produce value-added agriculture with efforts through gluten-free hemp, gluten-free oats and producing hemp. That was a big project in twenty nineteen. It was planted in twenty twenty for the first time in Wyoming. And there's, there was definitely some learning curves there, but that business continues to flourish. Other projects in local foods, one that's highlighted actually on page four is our primary beans project. And this is, this was just simply removing barriers for the business so that they could access local businesses to clean their beans. They, we also looked at packaging and they wanted to have as much value-added ag in the process locally as they, as they could possibly do. This, this company is actually headquartered in California. And they came through us through the University Research and Extension Center because we have a really strong partnership with the Research and Extension Center already being in Powell. And we do ag tours with them all the time, so I know Jim really well. The other main thing when it comes to local foods is access to markets. What you'll see more and more is that without that value-added ag process being in Wyoming and that revenue captured in Wyoming, what ends up happening is everything from beef producers to grain producers, they, they ship all of their products out of state and that, that revenue is lost. So what we're really looking toward is helping the producers find markets. And we're, we're doing that pretty regularly with, with many different businesses in, in Park County for sure. Another program I'd like to highlight that we worked on in twenty twenty is outdoor recreation. Outdoor recreation is a huge industry. Our neighbor to the south has fifteen mountain ranges and twenty-eight billion in revenue. Last time there was a report done, the state of Wyoming has a hundred and nine mountain ranges and five point six billion in revenue. So we have a lot of potential growth there that can be really thoughtful type of growth because we have such a huge asset of outdoor recreation. And when we're looking for the Powell area, we're, we're looking to develop the front country. Because it's well known that if you have assets that are close to our cities, it extends the length of stay for visitors and it's a huge quality of life piece when you're, when workforce is looking to relocate as well as existing residents and keeping them here. So really what we did for outdoor recreation is identify some front country areas that we could potentially develop, worked with BLM on that. We had our Polcat cleanup to raise awareness because as you're well aware with a lot of these front country, especially in the BLM, what people end up doing is taking a washer out there and shooting it. So it needed to be cleaned up and we held a Polcat Cleanup Day in September where we cleaned up an amazing amount of trash in an hour and a half, thirty, thirty-five hundred pounds. And thank you so much for the waiving the fee, the tipping fee at the, at the landfill for that. Another big project is spearheading, Pep really spearheaded getting Park County Outdoor Rec Collaborative. So that project started in the middle of the year or so last year and it's coming to fruition, which is fantastic. We've met with the steering committee and we'll have a whole collaborative meeting coming up here in May. That's a partnership with the state Office of Outdoor Rec Management. So Chris Floyd will be coming up here on, on a fairly regular basis, once a month, which is to get a state representative up here on any kind of regular basis is, is almost a feat in itself. So, so we'll be looking at creating sensible access to all of our huge federal lands. And that'll be BLM, BOR, forest, so on and so forth. So it's really worked out well in other parts of the state. I'm super excited. It definitely drives economic revenue to our area. And that is a whole county effort that Pep is spearheading. We also did a project with the arts. So Powell was selected as the third community in a pilot art program with the Wyoming Arts Alliance, which is housed down in Cheyenne. And essentially what we looked at is that in our area, we have an enormous amount of arts activities through the school system, K through twelve. Our Northwest College has many different types of art programs. We have one of the largest art supply places in the state in Gestalt. We have multiple different venues for galleries, Plaza Diane, Center for the Arts and Gestalt and such. And if you were to just drive down Bent Street in Powell or around Powell, you'd never know that so many artists were out there really producing and being super active. The arts is a clear way to drive revenue to Park County for sure. And it's also a way to extend the length of stay. And we're, what's come out of this, this pilot program that we went through, it was a five-week program last year with the Wyoming Arts Alliance, is a group of folks who are gonna ultimately spearhead creating interactive art in all kinds of different ways. Another program is our Vista Program. I think I mentioned it last year. We are the intermediary for a federal Vista Grant. Essentially, we have ten Vista slots in this grant and nine sites. And those vistas are placed throughout Park County. They decide to spend a year of their time here in, here in Park County. And they come from all over, all over the United States. And so they kind of bring their own unique perspective. And there's two main. And there's two main objectives with this federal grant. One is to alleviate poverty and the other is to build capacity. And they're located right now at Forward Cody, and we have one at the Maker Space, Plaza Diane Center for the Arts, Northwest College Foundation, Heart Mountain Interpretive Center, Homestead or Museum. And then on 2021, they'll be vistas onboarded for the Nature Conservancy at Heart Mountain and another open position. So that's really huge. And one thing to really highlight is through all of these programs, we look at them through the lens of economic development. How much money can we bring to the state? How much money can be spent in the state? How many jobs can be created? How can we help develop workforce? How can we help develop our our infrastructure? And so the Vista program is kind of like a little Petri just to workforce, right? What do people really want to experience while they're here in Park County? How can we make that a reality for them? And do they want to stay after their time is up? And it really does look like that program is working because we have multiple vistas who intend to stay in Park County after their service is complete. So that's really exciting. In 2021, we will continue to grow our visitor economy by managing the the Pal Visitor Center and all of the promotions that we're doing, including some fun new events called John Leslie Pal Days Festival. It's just on the radio this morning talking about it. We'll absolutely continue to support our ag economy. It's the third leg of the stool, as we're well aware, in Wyoming, and I think there's plenty of room for growth with value added ag and and marketing our unique products there. We'll continue to encourage Park County Pride, and we do that through elevating and bringing awareness to all of our many assets in Park County. And we'll continue to work on recreation after a recreation, of course, we had advocate for businesses and expand the arts. You can notice I didn't spend a whole lot of time on COVID because I think we're all over it. But needless to say, our office was the conduit for every communication that our businesses received. That was every 15 days, all the health orders came through our office, we turned them into infographics so they were easy for the businesses to post and share to their employees. We hand delivered PPE if they were having a hard time. We actually went out and bought spray bottles for them and cloths and rags and hand delivered all of the materials that came through Park County Health Department, including masks and such. And of course, we let all of the businesses know about the many and varied loans that came through on the federal, state, and local level. It was super important, obviously, during this period of time last year to just make sure that the businesses that are with us stay. You know, it was, we we spent an enormous amount of effort in in business assistance through those programs. And, you know, I think that the county for support, really, you guys are amazing partners to the Pal Economic Partnership and Chamber Visitor Center. You have always been really great partners, we we truly appreciate your support, your moral support and your financial support. And I truly believe that economic development at a county level is a team effort, and I appreciate you being a part of our team. Any questions?
Rebecca, I know that you were tasked, I know that the city of Pal asked for your help in identifying the Airbnbs that are in the area, coordinating that, how many are out in the county and all that? How is that moving along? Have we identified most of or all the Airbnbs that are in, especially in the Pal side?
Yep, so through through our zip code, and that's the Pal's zip code, so basically Clark to Garland, we pay for a program that keeps tabs on all of the vacation home rentals that are Airbnb and BBROs. Those are the two required to pay lodging tax and sales tax. There are, of course, others like Flip Key and and others that are harder to track down. And the onus on paying those taxes is actually on the vacation home rental owners. But last year in 2020, during a COVID year, we had a peak of 60 vacation home rentals in our zip code. In the year before, in 2019, we had a peak of 70. So there is quite, there is a range, and most of those people are operating during the high season for sure. But we do work with them to increase their, when they're open, and that that's a lot of education, you know, around the four seasons of recreation. Obviously, you're well aware that the fall season, hunting season, could be expanded upon when it comes to to tourism and staying in those vacation home rentals. A lot of hunters like to do that as opposed to staying in hotels. And we also have created last year basically a vacation binder. It's too majestic, it gives you every restaurant, attraction within 50 miles, information to help the vacation home rental owner, so on and so forth. Because essentially, unlike a hotel, these folks may or may not be aware of what their visitor needs to know and understands about our county. And that does kind of also alleviate and help with potentially neighbor relations because the more the the vacation home rentals are aware of of the information that they need to share, the easier it is for everybody.
Any more questions for Rebecca?
I just want to thank you for coming in and appreciate everything you do for the county.
Thank you.
Anyway, Rebecca, this is your chance to give us your spiel. We're we're going to make a decision on all the all the funding as we move forward in the budget process. And we have, as I I talk, we tell everyone, we get a pushback on how much we spend on these on these requests and and where we spend it. So just letting you know.
Okay, thank you, appreciate, appreciate your time.
Your hard work, appreciate it. Okay, well, next up, we have Otis Smith, President of Cody Shooty Complex, to come give us a talk about your refunding request. Thank you, brought back up.
Well, I have Mike Schnell here, he's our treasurer. Last year was, and he'll testify to that, it's a terrible year. We launched all of our shoots, we even launched the governor's shoot. So we did get, well, supposedly, we got a grant. I haven't signed it yet. We also supposedly, the grant was for fencing of a property that we haven't gotten yet.
Since, according to, according to who we're talking to, it's it's been signed and it's sitting on the on the desk at the state level, which.
Supposed to be in Cheyenne at the BLM office.
Yes, state director or acting, it's acting state director, they do not have a.
He was supposed to sign it and have it back up here by the end of the week, that was last week, so who knows? But I'm not signing the the grant because it starts today, I sign it. And I've got, I don't want to tell you how much it's for because the last thing I wanted to do is come out in the paper, and we haven't even got the bids yet. So if it comes out in the paper and the bids are there, I can imagine what the bid will be. So, but the the grant is only for fencing and tearing down the fencing.
Yep.
So.
My sources tell me that grant is in good shape right now.
Yeah.
So I think, you know, the game.
All I have to assign it, but one year from that time I sign it, it has to be done. So Mike can tell you more about our finances.
Yeah. Well, we're not totally broke, we're pretty, we're pretty fiscal as far as trying to stay within our income and our boundaries. We're not a huge income producing entity. But with our youth programs and and the updates, you know, it's like any business. You either go forward or you go back. So we try to keep enhancing the complex. Our membership keeps going up, and I assume that has something to do with move-ins and new people, plus people becoming aware. We've got some projects that we need to get done. Like Otis said, we had a lot of shoots canceled last year, like everybody else. And it put a little crimp in things, and you guys, of course, have to work within a budget and weren't able to participate last year, so it was kind of another hit. And we would like to, because as Otis said, we have to fence from Highway 120 all the way up to the mountains there to the west. Plus, we're going to have to fence the entryway where you turn off the county road in order to make it, you know, able to police the area. We've had inquiries from gaming fish, archery clubs that would like to possibly do some training centers and some shooting areas in that area south of what we now have fenced in. And we have to have enough room because of sporting play, southern courses. You have to have a certain amount of area so you don't get lead fallout from people shooting on that south course. But we've had quite a few inquiries, and we'd like to help accommodate them in something else to offer for the club. But it takes finances.
I talked to the governor's office, actually, government of the county, and asked me, is there anything that I wanted to improve on that they could assist us with financially? So I said, yeah, so I told him I wanted a 3D archery course, I wanted, and I gave him a number for that. There is a, going to be a really, really long range rifle course, and I gave him about three different things, and they said they'd see what they could do for us, and I haven't heard a word. But, you know, this is your property, not ours. We're just trying to make it one of the best shooting facilities. We already are the best shooting facility in the state of Wyoming.
So when you're talking about a 3D archer range, what about the archer range that's already in existence?
Well, that archery range, we kind of got burned on that many years ago. We bought all brand new 3D targets for our archery range. They opened up that one and all of our 3D archerings disappeared. So there went our 3D archery. So we're going to put up an actual, an actual course. And then one might get, I don't know if you've ever been to Billingsrod Gun Club, but they have a 20, a 30, a 40, a 50, a 60 lane, all gravelled and boxed off and huge backstop for their archers to come in and practice on that. And then they have a huge canyon that goes down and winds around, and they have their 3D archery rings down in that, so it's really nice. But I even had the president of their archery range, the ones that we have here at Cody out there on the Great Wall Highway, and he came, him and his wife, and took them all around and everything else. And he really loved the course, the the complex, and he was the one that got us interested in putting a 3D archery range.
You mentioned the the shoots that were canceled last year. We all know that story, but what about future scheduling? Is the governor's shoot coming back at any time or are any of the shoots starting to contact you?
My sporting play shoots are already scheduling back in. First of May, I got the firemen in conjunction with their fire school. The next day, we've got the fundraiser for the seniors' graduation. I call it the party, I think they've got a better. And we've got the young life scheduled then. We're hosting the Wyoming State Tournament Sporting Play this year. And that's usually 80 to 100 shooters that'll be here for about four days. And then I've got two or three registered shoots already scheduled, so we're trying to get back into the flow.
I think the, we had the governor's shoot last year, or was it year before?
Well, yeah, two years.
Two years in a row.
Yeah.
The last year that we had it, the fellow that put it on, he's from Las Vegas. They, he just took off, and I waited for the 15 days for our check, and we didn't get it. So I called him on the phone, and he said, geez, I'm really sorry, but I'm going out of business. So I said, geez, I'm really sorry. So I called every one of his sponsors, wrote letters to every one of the sponsors, and called the governor's office, told them about it. And then I got a phone call from him and said, how can we work this out? So he gave us three installments and paid off his loan 100%. So they, governor sent out, I think they sent out to seven different organizations that could put on the governor's shoot. They only got one reply back, and that was him. And I think he was embarrassed, but the governor did want it to be placed around the state because we have the best one in the state. So somehow they went to Casper, which is a gravel pit. And, you know, I think he may be embarrassed to come back, I don't know. But I've talked to him and I say, hey, no hard feelings, it was just business is business, you know? You pay, and from now on, when we have a big shoot like that, I've rewritten our contracts, and the contract says before the first shot is fired, you will have the money in my hand.
It's a good idea.
So anyway, that, I think, once his people, from the last I heard, from one of our people that keeps tabs on his shoots, he has 20 people signed up.
Casper.
In Casper. He has 300, he has 20, so they're in trouble.
Mr. Chairman, do you have an estimate of how much you guys lost last year because you canceled all your shoots?
You know, we put in for that, we started to put in for that deal that everybody in town put in.
Carries money.
And then we found out that, number one, we're a 501(c)(3), right?
501(c)(3).
And you have to have employees, which we have none, everything's a volunteer. So that killed us right there, so there was no way we could qualify for that money.
So you say maybe 18 grand or 20 grand that maybe you guys lost?
What did we lose last year with all the shoots?
Well, I'm guessing probably between the shoots, we probably lost about 40, 50,000 right in that area. With our budget, that's pretty good junk.
You know, our garbage pickup has gone up, our electric bill's down. We had never had an insurance audit in 20 years. So I'll call it a mistake or call it whatever you want, but I called them and said, maybe we should come out here and take a look at our equipment, take a look at what we've got, and let's readjust this. They were happy to do so. They stuck us with, what, $14,000 a year, insurance where we were paying like six. We got like $14,000 insurance, just insurance alone. The garbage is going up, our gas bill's gone up, everything is gone. And yet we had nothing coming in last year.
Yeah, but sure, if I could, just kind of a discussion. You know, last year, we we had a pretty hefty debate amongst, rigorous debate amongst ourselves special funding requests, and you folks got to throw down the stick, I'm sorry for that. And I and I think the reason you did, why you were cut so drastically, was the fact that kind of the consensus of our group was, we thought you were primarily user based funded. And we thought, well, maybe, you know, they can raise their membership fees, they can charge more for their events and those types of things. So I appreciate you coming to us and kind of explaining where you are and and how our money is actually being used.
When I took over, it was 60, the entry, the membership was $60. So the first year I raised it to $80. Then I let it go for two years, then I raised it again to $100. So initially, now, if you want to join the club, it costs you 110. The $10 of what's that electronic card that allows you to get in. And we have that all computerized, everything is computerized now, so when you pay your dues, it it goes on that, goes to the gate and tells you you can come in and go whatever you want. If you don't pay your dues, your card no longer works. When you get to the gate, you have people calling me saying, how come my card doesn't work? Well, you pay your dues, it would work.
So you kind of think your dues are are maxed out?
No.
If you go any higher, you're going to start losing.
No, I can't do it every year, but I do it about every two to three years. And we're kind of in the ballgame, but yet for what we have, I think we should be somewhere on 100 and a half, somewhere in that area. I'll wait another year or so, and then, you know, how the economy goes and we'll see how it works.
Well, you know, just thinking off the top of my head right now, looking out into the future, and you've described a number of very worthwhile projects that you're working on.
Sure.
It might be, we might be better receptive to your ideas. She came to us with that, just a blanket $10,000 request, say, okay, we've got the 3D range we want to put. Say, okay, we've got the three D range we want to put in. It's gonna cost tax. Help us out.
That'd be nice. That would be nice.
Mr. Chairman, I, I know most of us here, for some of us, I know have been out. And as the new commissioner liaison for the shooting complex, I, I did attend one of their meetings and, and I got a little bit of crap over how come we didn't get funded. You know, the very good facility is phenomenal. I was very, very impressed. I hadn't been to it before. I will say there was six other special funding requests that were, that were, that got zero as well. So you weren't alone. In the grant for the year, would be receiving for your fencing, I'm assuming you're gonna have a cattle guard. Was, is this gonna be included into your project? I mean, if you can't have a fence going into the entryway without a cattle guard. And I'm just thinking long term down the road and, and I don't know, we got a lot of discussion. We don't even know where our financing is gonna be. But you know, if some payment, we might be able to work something for, you know, on, on that. On the cattle guard installation or something because it is our property and it comes off a cattle guard. I don't know. I'm just throwing that out right now.
Tomorrow night's our meeting. I'm gonna bring the map that, that I have. It shows the boundary lines of the new addition. And, you know, the club was put together thirty years ago, thirty-five years ago. And it was just guess by golly, we'll put a rifle range over there and a skeet club over here, whatever. Years later, put a sporting clays in and whatever. But now that we've got this land, we've got to sit down and do some, some realistically planning. And so that we know where an archery range should be, but I don't want to move it. We also want to know where, we want to expand this or expand that. We want to utilize this ground, but it's gotta be safe also.
Sure. At my point is it ain't gonna do any good to build a cattle guard without a fence, without a cattle guard. So was that included into it?
We, the cattle guard was not, but gates and fencing and tear up, tear down all the other fencing is all inclusive in, in the bid. And I've got four fence, front sensors coming out to give me bids for it. But tomorrow night's the meeting, it's gonna take some sitting down, more than one meeting to kind of map out what we're gonna do with this extra property. Because we do have a bike trails on the other side of this hill. So you gotta be careful what we're shooting into that hill or it stays in that hill. The other side of it is wide open and it would make a nice rifle range, but it's gotta be far enough away from the highway and, you know, in a way that it poses no danger to anyone. So there's a lot of thinking and we've got to, we've got to work out planning, you might say planning and zoning, you know, whatever.
We're getting close to running out of time, but one, one suggestion I would make if you're bringing those contract, fencing contractors out there is have them, have them separate the cost of the new fencing and the cost of the tear out. I almost think maybe with your membership, you might get a volunteer day to, to do a lot of that, a lot of that tear out.
I wanted to do the whole thing. And I can put a whole crew together and do the whole thing. But the state says, no, you don't. You have to have a license contractor. They have to pay taxes. They have to, and they have to use licensed contractors. And I'm thinking to myself, I got volunteers are perfectly willing to go out there and tear down all that.
Does the tear out have to be done by the contractor?
Has to be done by a licensed contractor. That's in, that's in the form they have to sign. It says it's supposed to be licensed by the state. Because I call midway and, oh, sorry, I'm not licensed by the state, you know, so. Have a licensed fence builder.
We appreciate you guys coming here and pleading your case and we'll, you know, times are tight. We'll let you know when, when it comes to the actual budget.
Appreciate it.
Be able to.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
My nice meeting.
Is that what you called it? Did, you never called me back. You called me, I called you back. Something I need to get.
Second Tuesday's meeting.
Do I need to follow up? Okay.
Come and have coffee and donuts and go out to dinner. See ya.
Next up, we've got Tony Rutherford. Northwest Rural Water District Manager to approve Northwest Rural Water District petitions. Take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Good morning. I'm Tony Rutherford, Northwest Rural Water District Manager. Before you, this morning, we have a draft order for your consideration approving eleven petitions for different properties to either be included or enlarge our existing boundaries to be included within the boundaries of our district for water service. These, these petitions have all been reviewed by our staff, our board and approved by our board. We've worked closely with your clerk's office to ensure that we have all the correct signatures and appropriate signatures on the forms. And now they're here for your review and consideration as well. We continue to receive calls daily from folks looking to add on to our system. And we're, we're tacking on to the ends everywhere we can. And, and things are getting tight, but we continue to receive tons of interest in our service.
Does.
A question, Tony, when you're looking at these, I didn't go through all the legal descriptions, of course, but how many of them are actual expansions of the existing surface area boundaries? And how many of them were already, well, inclusive of the exist?
Yeah, so a couple of them in this stack are, I want to say two or three are properties that are right on the edges and the rest are all properties that are inside.
Tashed out inside.
Exactly, Ms. Ma'am.
So just as a point of clarification, when you can opt out, properties could opt out and not be included in the, in the district. And then so what you're having now is some of these properties that opted out of whatever, when it was first formed, coming up and saying, hey, we changed our mind. You want it?
When the district is, is formed, you're automatically out of your over twenty acres unless you opt in.
Okay, I knew there was some language in there.
And one of the things we're seeing now is a lot of those forty acre chunks out around the Powell area are, they want to subdivide those. And so they want to get them into the district boundaries so they can go through that process as well.
How's your capacity for serving?
We're, we're doing okay. There's a couple of service areas that we have that are, one in particular that is just about out of capacity. Another that's right behind it, both from about Ralston to Garland, south of Powell. If you drew a line from Ralston to Garland and south, that area has seen a huge boom in, in new homes and previously inactive water services that have been turned on in the last year. I went back through our records and from April to April, we've executed eighty-eight new water service contracts. The April to April previous, it was twenty-seven. So, and of those eighty-eight, forty-three were in our O'Donnell and Garland service areas that are nearing capacity issues. Elsewhere, we don't see the same, we're not quite as tight on capacity. We've got room for growth, but all it takes is a handful of big subdivisions to change that real quick on a rural system that's spread out. So.
Just one more question on your research for the capacity issues or is some of it just additional storage or is it pipe size?
Most of it, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, most of it is, is in those areas is storage. In some places we have pipeline capacity issues as well. And we, we've been working the last bunch of years to address some of those issues. And we continue to work on the storage issues as well. In order to go through the, the typical grant and loan funding processes, as you know, that all takes time and, and planning well in advance is some of these things in the boom that we've seen in the last year just.
Over, we had one subdivision over by the golf course that had to pull up because you couldn't get water. Is that, you guys don't service that area or is that a capacity situation or how does that work?
That's in our Garland service area where we are currently right at out of capacity.
So it would be, it wouldn't be making more pipes or more whatever infrastructure. It's just actual water. It's not available.
Well, it's, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, it's, it's storage tank capacity in the service area as well as pipelines to serve that particular subdivision.
Any more thoughts on putting water up North Fork?
No, I can answer that one. Tell them no.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, that's the exact same response I've heard from Cheyenne as well.
Same response you heard from North Fork too. Any more questions for Mr. Rutherford?
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move with approval.
Allow the chair to sign.
Allow the chair to sign.
Second.
Moving seconded, further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? There we go. Thanks, Tony.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
You bet. We'll see you again, I'm sure.
I bet. The way this county's growing, you're going to.
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
Next up, we do have Park County Engineer Brian Edwards. Run a little bit ahead of time. Well-oiled machine. Oh, you brought the hammer.
Brought the hammer with him.
Hammer time.
Good.
We are just peachy.
Well, the golf course has its own.
You look like you didn't work it.
Hey, I just lost all kinds of control.
It's not getting carried away.
Next up, we have Park County Engineer Brian Edwards to approve and allow the chair to sign the Federal Land Access Program Project Memorandum of Agreement. Those that don't know, we're moving forward with continuing to improve the South Fork Road. Take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you know, and I think it's been reported locally, we did apply per coordination with the commissioners on late last year for a second round of funding through the Federal Lands Access Program. That's through the Federal Department of Transportation. We were notified March seventeenth that we've been shortlisted for a funding request. And that funding request, we were trying to finish the rest of the South Fork Road from about the Forest Service boundary all the way to the end of state maintenance is what we applied for. We knew that was probably a bike dream.
By in the sky.
By the sky, but we, we went for, went for the max. And anyway, so they've been, they've shortlisted us, the, the selection committee. They've stated that at this point, we're not competing against any other shortlisted projects. So it's just our project. But what they'll, the next step will be, like what happened on phase one, will be a scoping. And the, the team from Federal Highways, Central Federal Lands will come and look at the project and evaluate, you know, what all's needed, fine tune the cost estimates. And that will define, will still probably start at the Forest Service boundary and come this way. But where we end up will depend a lot on that, that scoping. What they've got allocated is a total of fourteen million, one hundred and twenty thousand. You know, and that's with two million of county match is what is proposed. It's about a fifteen percent match of eligible costs. And so that's kind of the target budget. It's not programmed to start anytime soon, so we'll do the scoping this year. They said the program could be as far out as like two thousand twenty-six or twenty-seven. It's just how the program dollars work. Some of the things involved in the project would be widening the road, going from a twenty-four foot wide to thirty-two foot wide road in, in some places, some covert replacements, minor realignments in areas for curves. And biggest thing is major pavement rehabilitation, reworking the pavement area in the, in the area. New signs and striping, those are the things that, that they'd be trying to accomplish. So with today's actions, what we're, I guess, asking the commissioners, this is really not a, a commitment that you're gonna do the project, you know, that will be forthcoming. So this is just the first phase of scoping. There is a memorandum of agreement that they would like to sign. This is very similar to what happened on the first phase, which basically it's an agreement between the Forest Service, Park County and Central Federal Lands, Federal Highways, saying that we're committed to start the scoping process. And the cost of that is the county would transfer ten thousand dollars and the federal highways will commit fifty thousand dollars. So it's sixty thousand dollars total towards this scoping effort. So that's where we're at today. There's a memorandum of agreement that I've seen a draft of. The county attorneys looked over these documents. And then there's also a separate fund transfer agreement. And before, before you guys take any action on that, I'd like to just say a few things. I know there was an article in the Powell paper. I did read it. And one of my, one of my old, letter to, letter to the editor. And, and you know, and this is not really probably the venue, but I think just for the, because there will be a response. But just the, you know, some of the things that were mentioned there. Keep in mind, our office is very aggressive about going after any outside funding because funding is always very difficult, you know, budget cuts. Trying to do more with less is always, you know, what we're, what we're up against. And so, you know, the, the things that discussed in Mr. Keister's letter about, you know, going after and getting additional funding and funding for gravel roads and getting the gravel roads up to speed and all that. We do that, you know, we go after C Mac money to, for gravel. We go after bros money to replace bridges. So if the funding's available, if somebody has something else that we should be going after, bring it to our attention. We'll go after it because we, we're doing that. And, and so these federal lands access dollars, they're very specific and very competitive on what they're allowed to do. You know, it's access to federal lands. And so, you know, projects that are in Park County that do that, this is a highly rated project. Other, other examples are up on the Bear Tooth Highway. They've used a lot of federal lands access dollars up on the Bear Tooth Highway. They're just, those are the type of roads that are available. You can't do a, you know, a two A B that's also needs or you can't do a lower gravel or, or, yeah, they're, you know, lane five. Powell, there's, there's lots of needs, but those funds just are not available for outside. So just wanted, you know, the public to be aware of that. Got my skin riled up a little bit.
Commissioner told them.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I couldn't, I'd really appreciate Brian bringing that up. If you hadn't, I was gonna bring it up because we did talk about it this morning. But I think the most important thing that the public needs to understand is, is even though the South Fork Road may not be high on our priority list of roads, but there is money available for that. And so we were in, on phase one, our share of that was what, right at?
About fifteen percent, about the same. We're pretty close.
It's about the same, eight and a half, two million dollars. And we got a fifty million dollar project. And it's the same this, we can take our dollars and leverage them to get a brand new road as part of the mountain.
Yes. And, and you know, the discussion was, well, it's still taxpayer dollars, those federal dollars you get. But like I say, there are people lined up for months that want those dollars outside of Wyoming, outside of Park County. And if we have the need, my personal opinion is we're foolish to not be going after those. So.
And just to add as priority, excuse me, in the county, the South Fork and the Willwood are two of our worst paved roads. Something has to be done whether we have funding or not.
So I got a question for you guys. And it's just, we don't have to dive into it too deep here, but this is gonna extend from the forest boundary to?
We're hoping lower South Fork at Andy Martin Hill. But I doubt we'll get that far.
Does it make sense? And, you know, you might not be able to answer it right now, but would it make sense just if we, if we're mowed? If there, if we've got companies mowed there to have them bid out, you know, maybe just a little bit further. Would we, we could, is there a possibility we could realize a cost savings by, you know, if we need to extend it a mile or half mile or something of having them do it and going ahead and paying them directly while they're there. You see what I'm saying? Once that bid's let, if we've got a company sitting, sitting there and they're mowed in there, a lot of the costs are mobilization anyway, is if we can say, well, we want to go ahead and spend some more county dollars and get, you know, better, you know, better bang for our buck. That's just a suggestion that I'm going out.
Well, we had it set up that way on the first phase. We had an option X basically or an option Y. I can't remember which one it was. We had the Hunter Creek Road and that small bridge. And then we had another mile pass Crowell Creek towards town through TE. We had agreements with TE. We had everything set up, but the budget didn't allow it and we didn't go further.
But I think that is something, once we get through the scoping, that we can negotiate in that. Because like Ben says, we had that in there, but it was a, still the fifteen eighty-five match. If the county wanted to put in and do another mile or two miles, you know, without that. It's worth having that in the.
Is, you know, if we got two miles that we can get at a, at a, you know, fifty or sixty percent, you know, cost of what it normally costs is if we just, if we just spec that or bid that one, you know, piece. It's just a thought.
Yep, it's good to have that option for sure.
Mr. Chairman, I agree with you too. So I think this is a good win-win. But with the current administration back in Washington and the one point nine trillion for infrastructure that's coming up.
You say two.
Two million, what trillion, whatever it is. I mean, there's, we don't. Two million, what trillion, whatever it is. I mean, there's, we don't know where all that's gonna, there could be additional funding.
That's from, yeah, the one we watching.
Definitely, we might be able to connect to in the Y dot. And then this question came up on something else on the committee. And how many highways are we partnershiped or roads with federal highway administration in Park County?
That were partnershiped? Um, I don't know.
I mean, this is one more than us.
Yeah, and when we say partnership. Yeah, it it's for partnership in terms of funding assistance. Yeah, Bear Tooth Highway and this project would be the two that I know of. Um, I know why not because that Chief Joseph, and I'll get myself in trouble here, but you know, there's some bad relationships there just because it's a dedicated scenic, you know.
The reason being, it's kind of really getting off in the weeds, but there's discussion already about the Congressional Tour of '22 focusing on federal highway transportation, basically because of the trillions of dollars that are gonna be through the current administration's gonna be kicking out for infrastructure rebuilds, so.
Cool.
Mr. Chairman, the you you're talking, of course, down the road. Are there any, I guess, inflation proofing on on these numbers that we're getting? Uh, we weren't gonna see a whole bunch of contract changes saying, well, the cost has gone up and all of that?
That's always a wild card and it happened to us on the first phase. You know, the timing, the way the construction hit, we didn't have a lot of interest from contractors just because they were real busy. And as far out as this is, I don't know how you, you know, they'll scope it and I think we just do the best.
Because with an additional 2 trillion coming into the economy, our $1 isn't worth a dollar coming up next year, so.
No, that's a, that's a valid point concern, fuel prices, the way things are going, you know, with the cost of materials, where we'll be in two years, three years when we, you know, get ready to start doing this, I, it's, that's a really good question.
But the scoping, the scoping is still is still necessary and the scoping will still be valid as far as it identifies what needs done.
Exactly.
The cost can be adjusted, but you'll still have, you'll still be able to set that scoping document on the shelf and pull it down and the work, the work is, for the most part, is exactly the same.
And what happened last time, if you recall, it ended up coming in higher than what was scoped and they went back to Central Federal Lands at no cost to Park County and got additional funds. So whether or not those funds would be there, I don't know, but, um, you know, that that did happen in the past.
At least we don't have any bridges on this chunk.
Yep, no bridges. We should get a lot of roadway done on this, so a lot of paved road.
Alright, well, appreciate it.
Can I clarify one more thing as far as the Powell Tribune article is? My name's spelled E-N, not R-O-N.
Your name is spelled what? H-A-M-M-P-R?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I moved to approve the memorandum of agreement and allow the chairman to sign for the South Fork Federal Land.
Second. Moving seconded, further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close?
Thank you, Alan, for all the work you did on that.
Yep, thank you.
No. Morning, Barb.
Good morning.
Next, we've got Park County Treasurer Barb Polley to discuss approving to replace personnel.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Board. Basically, what I'm looking at is, um, I had an unexpected employee decide to resign. She's got nine years, nine years of experience, so I do have a part timer that's wanting to go full time. So you'll see that in my proposal, so I'd like to move her up. By doing that, I'm gonna save the county about $6,700 over the term and then also replace the part timer that she is. Um, I did send out to you guys yesterday how much of an increase the office has done. Um, we continue to grow, as you can tell by the community. You know, just in transactions and sales, the registration stuff, we went from 893,000 last year to over a million this year, just compared to March over March. Transaction wise, we went from 35300 to 69, and that's just rough estimates. So right now, I'm running out roughly five and a half staff on that front line. Yesterday, people can attest, um, we had all six windows open plus the two in the back and we couldn't keep up. My staffing in the back was behind them with their garage sale drawers, I call them, to try and get the others out for lunch. So in all honesty, that part timer could easily be another full timer at the rate we're going, but we don't know how the economy is gonna go, you know, that's the hard thing. But right now, we are swamped. And so losing this person of nine years, along with the one I left that retired last week, you know, 15 years is gonna put a little bit of burden on us right now. So my request is to move the full time or the part timer to full time and replace my part timer. Any questions?
Also told by the public that they didn't wanna kick forward any more funding, so they'll be waiting.
And right now, they are. They're, I mean, with the full crew I have, they were out the door and asked Colleen. They were actually 10 deep yesterday, in all honesty, and that's with a full crew.
And we did 87 miles yesterday.
Well, we 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 knew it was coming.
Yeah, and we do, and we understand that. But the phone calls and the transference and just trying to keep up with the public right now, it's it's unusual. I mean, it is an unusual.
What, you have some?
I I just wanna, Barb, thanks for the detailed request here and and I support it. I was, my question was, you are sharing an employee still with the clerk's office, is that working?
No, we don't share an employee.
We were going to.
We're gonna see how our two, remember I went part time with one. So we're gonna see how our two part timers work out and there's a possibility that maybe we can make one of them full time to come back and forth right now.
So we haven't done that yet. I was just curious if.
The really hard thing about that is we need the part time, the people the same time lunch hours and stuff.
And and it's a lot for, it's a lot for them to learn. I mean, it's it's a lot.
Well, I think it's a good idea and if it works, it works. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we approve Mr. Rider's request as stated with moving the part time to full time and advertising for the part time position.
Second.
Moving seconded, further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Barb.
And I I looked at my budget for next year and actually my salary, just the salary, because I know everything else changes, my budget will actually be less for just the salivating people. So that'll help with the people. So I appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
And I don't know if you got the sales and use and stuff reports and, yeah, it's amazing. I didn't watch it. Thank you, guys.
Thanks. Lunchtime?
What?
There's on that agreement and then here, and then I'll fill in a guns number.
Good thing.
The Federal Highway Administration question, the committee we were discussing was that if so focused on I-80 with the new administration, what can we show them in the Big Horn Basin that is federal?
Well, I'm looking forward to that that tour whenever.
I know we got a lot over the Big Horn, oh, the Big Horns, County, but visit with Big Horn and Washkeel.
Did you need those back right away or just throw them in my trunk?
No, just put them in there.
Okay. Alright.
Late, not to stay after school.